Good evening. This meeting to order. This is Dr. Jennifer Jones, Board President. First item on the agenda is roll call. Dr. Davis?
Trudy Davis, Director District Four.
Good evening. Lakisha Phillips, Director District Three.
Jennifer Jones, Director District Two.
Anton Morris, Director District One.
Joan Murphy, District Five.
Dani Pfeifer, Superintendent. And I believe our scholar advisors or representatives will be here shortly.
Next is a presentation of colors by the Todd Beamer High School, JROTC. Please rise if you are able. You may be seated. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting agenda. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the meeting agenda of October 28th, 2025 as submitted.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the required approvals agenda. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
I move the Board of Education approve the required approvals agenda of October 28th, 2025 as submitted.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is school welcome. Kylo Middle School, Dr. Pfeifer.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. I'm excited to be here at Kylo Middle School this evening. I want to thank the students and staff for hosting us. I'm going to invite Charlene Pritchard, the principal, up to do our school welcome. She'll be highlighting the strengths and opportunities for growth here at Kylo. Charlene?
Good evening, Board President, Dr. Jones, members of the Board, Superintendent, Dr. Pfeifer, and the scholar representatives to the Board, as well as our community members. And welcome to Kylo Middle School, home of the Cougars. Kylo is an authorized IB NYPD school emphasizing inquiry-based learning, global awareness, and critical thinking. Students are making global connections from classroom to world. We celebrate and honor Kylo's diversity with over 25 languages spoken by our students and families. This year, we launched our new middle school master schedule to expand the opportunities in music, language, and enrichment. It supports core academics and creativity through electives and tiered supports. We have strengthened our Tier One and Tier Two supports through intentional teamwork across departments, with monthly recognitions to celebrate our learner profiles of risk-taker, open-minded, caring, balanced, enquirers, thinkers, knowledgeable, communicators, principled, and reflective. These moments reinforce our values, responsibility, respect, and reflection. Students earn Starbucks for demonstrating our star expectations: safe, thoughtful, accepting, and responsible, and are recognized daily through the Cougar Store and quarterly All-Star events, creating a positive school climate. Scholar advisory and scholar panels give student voice in shaping their learning environments, building ownership and leadership. Our Cougar ambassadors support belonging through peer mentorship and help new students transition successfully. Our PBIS and counseling teams use Panorama data to guide support focused on belonging, engagement, and academic supports and safety, ensuring that the student centered and data-driven. Our Level Up provides targeted academic supports in phonics, vocabulary, comprehension, math, and extension, with instructional calibrating across the staff using multiple years of data to meet each student's needs and support growth. Scholar safety and belonging are the heart of everything we do. When students feel seen, safe, and valued, they engage more deeply and are more likely to thrive academically and socially. Over the past year, we've been making progress in our building stronger and more connected to our school culture. This year, our focus is on increasing attendance across all groups to 90% or higher. Stronger family communication, recognition systems, and advisory-based goal tracking through our Better Together campaign, and are already showing promising results. We're also committed to fairness and reducing our discipline disproportionality. Systems like our PBIS Starbucks, Cougar Store, and Clear Expectations reinforce our positive behaviors, while Tier One and Tier Two collaboration ensures proactive supports rather than reactive consequences. Belonging is essential in our identity. Panorama data shows steady growth in students feeling connected, and initiatives like Scholar Panel, Cougar ambassadors, and monthly recognitions help students see themselves as valued members of our community. Together, these efforts create a safe, welcoming environment where every student can grow and connect and succeed. Our successes this year are grounded in our commitment to growth for every student, academically and personally. We've built strong data-driven systems in reading, writing, and math centered on student growth. In ELA, teachers are using strategies like reasoning and writing to strengthen vocabulary, fluency, and expression. Targeted small groups instruction through our Level Up structures are showing results with growth in phonics and comprehension on iReady and PowerUp. In math, our Level Up groups help students focus on specific skills, while teachers analyze data each cycle to group students intentionally and track progress. Students know their goals, monitor their own growth, and celebrate successes through the monthly recognitions. Most importantly, we're seeing not just higher scores, but a higher confidence, and students are taking ownership, reflecting on their goals, and celebrating small wins. At Kylo, learning is visible, measurable, and celebrated. We know that true success happens when families and schools work together. This year, we've been listening through advisory meetings, surveys, and event feedback, and your input has shaped our next steps. Families share that they feel welcome and connected, which tells us our focus on relationships and communication is working. You also said you'd like more support understanding what students are learning, so we've started sharing monthly curriculum highlights and goal-setting tips to help make learning visible at home. We also heard that attendance can be a challenge, so we are focusing on morning check-ins, recognition, and small group supports to remind students that every day counts. And finally, families appreciate our counseling supports and want more opportunities for students to talk about stress and belonging. We're expanding advisory lessons and small group sessions to meet that need. Our COO Crew, Cougar ambassadors, and leadership programs have provided student voice and authentic feedback that connects directly to the instructional improvements of school culture. What have we learned? Students want strong relationships, teachers who know and check in with them regularly. They value clear learning targets and examples of what success looks like. They want more chances to collaborate, talk, and reflect during lessons. They appreciate that lessons feel relevant to real life and are connected to their interest. They desire consistent instructional routines, having time to practice and get support, and provide feedback and clarity on their progress. Using this feedback, we have refined pacing, increased routines, embedded goal-setting, taught student talk protocols, and increased reflection and note-taking and end-of-unit learning. The impact builds trust between students and staff, and students see their voice matters. Our goal is to strengthen the link between student experiences and school-wide improvement planning.
Those are these people whose names are up here. Learners are people who are still working on that iReady lesson, or either are still working on the lesson, or finished the lesson but didn't pass the lesson quiz. You're going to pair up one of these with one of these. Then you guys are going to work together to do the practice, which everybody has assigned to them. So Bella, once you and your partner both have the lesson done, now you're going to work on the practice.
We know that it got bigger, so it couldn't be this big, so that only one.
Now, of all of these, which one is right? Is, are the corresponding angles?
Is it the same shape?
No, they're not.
What happens to the shadow? Does all that? Does it change size?
Our scholar showcase is an eighth-grade math lesson utilizing leaders and learners within the classroom to push and extend student thinking and support of one another. I would like, at this time, to welcome Chanel and Haley to come up and talk about their eighth-grade last math lesson from Mr. Rupel's math class.
This is our leaders and learners activity where people who know the activity and know what they're doing, understand the curriculum, show the people who don't completely understand how to do it. This helps us because sometimes people don't understand what the teacher is talking about, and the students can help them understand a little bit more of the curriculum.
This also helps our community by sharing different ways on how to solve problems with other kids and showing, like...
It's teaching us how to talk to people and tell them what, show them how to do it instead of them trying to figure it out on their own, not knowing what they're doing. Thank you for listening.
Thank you so much for coming to Kylo.
Thank you, Principal, your helpers. Next item on the agenda is Schools Can't Do It Alone. Dr. Pfeifer?
Yes, thank you. One of the pillars of our strategic plan is acknowledgement that schools can't do it alone. And this evening, we have the privilege of highlighting a partner that has made a difference in the lives of our students. I'm going to ask Jessica Morgan, Chief of Communications, to spotlight that partner this evening.
Good evening, Board President, Dr. Jones, members of the Board, Superintendent, Dr. Pfeifer, and scholar representatives to the Board. Now more than ever, schools can't do it alone, and we would like to show our appreciation for the contribution made by the following organization for the benefit of scholars in our district. Thank you to the Korean Consulate General in Seattle and the Korean Education Office for your generous grant supporting the Korean Dual Language Program at Olympic View K8, the first of its kind in Washington State. The Consul General and members of the Korean Education Office also visited Olympic View K8 on October 15th to see the program in action, joining scholars for a phonics lesson in the new Korean Dual Language Classroom. This support strengthens our partnership and helps scholars deepen their language skills, cultural understanding, and global connections through learning. While they were unfortunately unable to join us tonight, we thank Consul General Saul, Director Lee, and everyone involved for the meaningful partnership, and look forward to continuing our work together.
Next item on the agenda is good news announcements. Director Murphy?
Congratulations to 3D Cater High School scholars for their outstanding achievements in the 2025 Washington State Fair FFA exhibition. And again, I want to know what that acronym means. Future Farmers of America, okay? Logan Font, Brooklyn Bolger, Stoffy Petrie. And if you're with us, please come forward. Yay! Our scholars showcased their dedication by cleaning, grooming, and preparing their animals for competition. They demonstrated not only their knowledge of the species through answering questions, but also their skill in proper animal handling. These awards highlight our scholars' dedication, hands-on learning, and leadership through the Future Farmers Association, right? Got it. Of America, okay. Congratulations, scholars. And we're very proud of you.
I think it's important to note, though, the actual prizes that they earn. We're talking about grand champions, top of class here in many of the categories. So I want to just shout that out as well as individual achievements. Thank you for being here this evening.
And we would also like to recognize Federway Public School staff members, including, if I help, if I say your name right, I hope so, Kalen Alafont from Communication Department and our College and Career Specialist, the College and Career Readiness Department, for their outstanding work in planning and hosting the 2025 Life After Debt, Life After High School College and Career Fair of October 22nd. I am a little nervous. Sorry. The district event provided students and families with opportunities to explore college and career pathways, connect with representatives from colleges, employers, and training programs, and gain valuable tools to plan for the future. Attendees also participated in engaging workshops, panels, and open lab sessions for support with financial aid, college essays, and high school and beyond plan. Thank you for your dedication in helping our scholars prepare for success after school. Truly, your work truly empowers our students to take the next steps forward with confidence, and we are proud of you.
How are you? Next item on the agenda is Legislative Update. Director Phillips?
Okay, good evening, fellow board directors. Not, nothing too major. I also sit on the Legislative Committee for the state, and we had our Legislative Committee meeting this last weekend, so I got to spend eight hours with school board directors across the state. And essentially, we are starting to prepare for the short session that is coming up, and WASDA is pulling together our priorities. So Federway Public Schools has already done ours, a lot of other districts have pulled theirs. WASDA is kind of last one to kind of come in behind, and I think some of the major topics are still coming up. MSOC is still a conversation that feels like most districts are saying we're going to need support. Special education was something that came up, and we had a really good conversation around some of the unfunded mandates and what it looks like to either take a pause on some of those or figure out some alternatives considering the financial implications. So that was about it for the conversation. We'll continue to plan for advocacy as we move into the session that starts in January. I feel like the first week of January, I think. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director Phillips. Next item on the agenda is District Priorities Update. Dr. Pfeifer?
Thank you, Board Team. This evening, we prepared a presentation that highlights our district priorities for the 25-26 school year. These priorities, as I've shared previously, are not new priorities, but instead continued and more focused priorities from the 24-25 school year. So especially given our academic growth that you heard about during our school improvement plan presentations, and I want to thank you for being actively involved in those. I'm going to ask our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Melissa Spencer, and Learning Improvement Officer, David Herrera, to do this presentation on my behalf. Melissa?
Good evening, Board President Jones, members of the Board, and Superintendent, Dr. Pfeifer. We're tonight going to provide an overview of our intentional district priorities that will support the acceleration of scholar learning through improved instructional delivery. As we share with you this evening, you will note that this work supports Subends One, Two, and Three, as well as Executive Limitations Two. Our strategic plan describes a multi-year vision of improvement. From our strategic plan, we create annual district priorities, which describe our areas of focus for the year to drive our ongoing improvement. Having clear district priorities also supports each school to develop site-based school improvement plans that align with the broader improvement work of the district, which results in more coherent efforts to improve student learning. Let's take a moment to review the selected district priorities of the 25-26 school year. The circles on the cover of our priorities document represent the two major priorities for our improvement work this year. The green circle represents our first priority, which is to provide every scholar with access to high-quality rigorous instruction. The orange and blue circles represent our second priority, which is to implement multi-tiered systems of support to ensure that each scholar receives what they need to be successful, both academically and social-emotionally. Our priorities begin with alignment to our strategic plan through identified signature strategies. The first three signature strategies have carried over from the last year, but we have also added a new strategy focused on co-teaching and inclusionary practices to explicitly support our multilingual learners and scholars with individualized education plans, or IEPs. Our priorities layer each year. This year, we continue to maintain a focus on our Cell 5D indicators for high-quality instruction, as well as maintain our focus on multi-tiered systems of support. New this year is our intentional focus on multilingual learners through integrating PSYOP into daily instruction, implementing Tier Two skill groups in reading and math in grades K through eight, outlining level-specific priorities, and adding the new signature strategy with a focus on inclusionary practices. This slide provides an overview of our key priorities: high-quality rigorous instruction, multi-tiered academic supports, and multi-tiered social-emotional supports. We'll begin by unpacking our priority of high-quality rigorous instruction. We define high-quality Tier One core instruction as focusing on detailed planning, rigorous instructional strategies, providing ongoing assessment to drive instructional decision-making. Critical to this work is clear backwards planning at the unit level, as well as lesson planning for daily instruction. We focus on how to cognitively and emotionally engage students in their learning, as well as how we use assessment to understand student learning, as well as engage students in feedback and goal-setting. Our district support team will focus on high-quality instruction with a focus on mathematics. Here, we differentiate our professional development and support based on both academic and growth data. Much like multi-tiered systems of support for students, the district support team provides a core level of support for all schools, and then layers additional support to targeted and comprehensive schools so that they can accelerate student learning. Now David will speak to the other two key priorities for 25-26.
Our next key priority focuses on multi-tiered academic supports that aim to accelerate student learning. The central premise of multi-tiered academic supports is that all scholars can reach the same level of rigorous core learning standards, and they might need different levels of support to do so. We provide that support through layering small group and skill group instruction. Skill groups aim to either fill gaps or provide extensions to support scholar engagement with learning core grade-level standards. We provide small group instruction in both Tier One core instruction, as well as through Tier Two skill groups. Tier One small groups are teacher-led groups that aim to support students in achieving grade-level standards. Tier Two skill groups are built on benchmark and progress monitoring data. They are developed during intervention planning meetings and provide both intervention and extension based on student needs. This year, we are implementing a continuum of academic supports at all levels, K-12, in both reading and math. At the close of this year, we will know we have been successful at implementation when professional learning communities have engaged in measurable planning for student engagement and small group instruction, and when classrooms are reporting 80% of scholars meeting standard on end-of-unit assessments. Teachers will have implemented Tier Two skill group instruction for both ELA and math, addressing scholar skill gaps, and over 80% of all scholars will have made accelerated growth, or more than one year's expected growth. Our next key priority focuses on multi-tiered social-emotional supports that aim to grow the whole child so they are successful both academically and social-emotionally. We continue to utilize our MTSS structures for various tiers of support when addressing attendance and discipline needs by designing universal, targeted, and intensive strategies. We are systematizing data analysis at all tiers to drive core supports, as well as interventions for Tier Two and Tier Three needs. Improvement networks are one of the ways we implement a continuum of social-emotional supports. The Attendance Improvement Network is working to carry forward the momentum from last spring's Attendance Cup to our efforts this fall. The team has already met, and will be sharing specific strategies with principals to strengthen the work of attendance teams for the 25-26 school year. Our work to minimize disproportionality in our discipline data also continues. The Discipline Network is partnering with the Puget Sound ESD to engage in professional learning, and will continue to build proactive strategies in support of creating a sense of belonging, engagement, opportunities, and clear systems of behavior support for all scholars. Success will be determined by measuring the implementation of positive behavior systems and SEL curriculum at all school sites. Data will be monitored, measuring for a decrease in scholar behavior that leads to exclusionary discipline and an increase in the percentage of scholars who attend school regularly. Dr. Spencer will now share our progress towards implementation and programmatic updates.
We launched implementation of these strategies for the 25-26 year in June of last school year. Our annual strategic summit, school teams, at our annual strategic summit, school teams gathered to hear about the intentional areas of focus for the upcoming school year and began to plan for implementing at their school sites through the development of their school improvement plans. In August, all levels of leadership from the superintendent's cabinet to building-level principals were engaged in professional learning and planning for implementation of this year's selected strategies. Our monthly PD sessions for principals continue to grow capacity and refine leadership skills around these selected areas. In September, principals shared their school improvement planning efforts addressing specific strategies, approaches, and measures of progress towards the selected strategies for each school site. We have launched this school year with an additional level of support through the district support team with an intentional focus on mathematics, and continue with our district-led networks refining our approaches to discipline and attendance across the district. As these structures have launched this fall, we will monitor for implementation and progress towards attaining our defined goals. towards attaining our defined goals and metrics throughout the year. Now, I'll review key programmatic updates in alignment with the five goals of our strategic plan. In Goal 1, we continue to focus on implementation of science of reading and connecting with our early learning providers through the early learning gatherings. New this year is our K-3 Assurance Teams modeled after our Graduation Assurance Teams. Additionally, we're implementing a new Tier 2 math curriculum and progress monitoring tools. We've also expanded our dual-language programming to Olympic View by opening dual-language Spanish and Korean kindergarten classrooms. In Goal 2, we continue to focus on attendance, positive behavior supports, and the implementation of our social-emotional curriculums in grades K-12. This year, we continue to expand our family academies, to revise our first 30-days curriculum focused on sense of belonging, and to build our community partnerships in support of attendance, mental health, and social-emotional well-being. In Goal 3, we continue to implement Project Lead the Way units, offer STEM courses in all middle schools, and increase participation in summer school. New this year is our expansion of Project Lead the Way to 5th Grade, the integration of our JML since-time immemorial units to all grades K-12, and building out our implementation of the Portrait of a Graduate. In Goal 4, we continue our school improvement planning efforts with principal improvement networks, implementing science of reading and high-quality mathematics instructional practices, and implementing teacher-led small group instruction to provide a continuum of supports to accelerate student learning. New this year is our implementation of a new Tier 2 math curriculum and progress monitoring tools in reading. Additionally, we've expanded our high school intervention courses in math and reading to all comprehensive high schools. We are implementing a focus on writing across the content areas in grades K-12, and expanding our PSYOP professional development to all levels. In Goal 5, we are continuing our graduation assurance meetings, implementing multiple credit recovery options, building robust CTE pathways at all high schools, and improving college and career readiness events like Kinders to College and our 5th grade visits to high school CTE programs. New this year is the implementation of a robust 9th grade on-track, of robust 9th grade on-track teams at all comprehensive high schools, building out a comprehensive college and career readiness plan for all grades K-12, and focusing on academic advising through our comprehensive school counseling plan. To close, our main priorities are on high-quality rigorous instruction and multi-tiered systems of support in both academics and social-emotional areas. All of our work is in alignment with these two priorities. Thank you for your attention as we shared our district priorities and action steps. Please let us know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Board members, are there any questions?
I just had one. I think I made a connection, but I could be wrong. When you talk about the co-teaching and inclusion models, is that where you're doing the Tier 2 groups? Am I close?
It happened, generally that happens during core instruction. So our Tier 1 is our co-teaching and pushing, but you also might see our multilingual teachers, as well as our special education teachers, being used to also direct a small group.
Okay. And then I appreciated seeing that it's a discipline and attendance network. Are they doing that at the same time, or these are two separate networks?
They're two separate networks, and this will be our third year with fidelity. Our first year was kind of a launch. Last year, we really got into the work, and this year we will build upon that work.
And essentially, that's what you're going to use, well, the whole process. So thanks for having a nice little map. But that's going after essentially closing the discipline and attendance disproportionality?
Yes. Looking at research using the cycle of improvement science. So looking at the research, looking at outlier and bright spots, not with, not just within our school district, but also across the state or the United States, trying on different strategies that can help combat disproportionality, as well as get after our attendance.
Nice. And then I'll just share, as a parent, I have noticed the increase in working on writing, which has been kind of cool. Both my kids have come home and, oh, yeah, I'm glad that they're working on that because it's looking a little rough, you know? It's hard not to compare it to when you went to school. I was like, I had to learn how to write it in print and cursive, but they're on their way. And then I have a kid in high school, and I think the math extension is going to be a game changer. I know for my kid alone, like having math every other day seemed really, it was a stretch. So I'm excited now they're essentially having access to doing math every single day. So I will share, as a parent, I don't understand how that's going to change his schedule and his requirements. I'm hoping that somebody has a master plan for him. I think it'll come together. But, key point, the math extension every day, I think, is really nice. And it seems to be building confidence in the students, too. So, kudos and good work.
Yes.
Four-by-eight schedule. Your child has 32 opportunities to meet 26 credits. So having additional math class or an additional ELA class, as, so they can have it every day, doesn't take away from their opportunities to take electives or the courses that they need in order to be ready to graduate.
Yes, I want to ask Dr. Phillips. You said about writing? Yes. Do you mean, like, writing essays, or do you mean the, the process of like penmanship, or both?
Thank you. I don't have my doctorate yet. I'm working really hard to get there. And, yeah, they're actually doing both from what I've seen so far.
Okay. And what, what grade level?
I have a 3rd grader, and a 10th grader, and an 11th grader.
Okay. Yeah, I'm seeing quite a comeback of penmanship. I think they realize that that's a muscle that helps enhance the brain to remember and make connections. And I was really excited to see those kiddos that were working on the computer, but they also had a pencil in hand, and also mentioned that they had notebooks. That's, I think, very important, so they can go back and review. I was curious about how, why you put down SEL curriculum fully implemented? Has it not been fully implemented? Will this be like a, a final year where you're really pulling it all together?
Well, first of all, when we say full implementation, we're, we're talking about things done with fidelity. So making certain that we're fully implementing goes along with our staff doing walks alongside of the principals, making certain that we're on pace with our units, that, that it's being taught with fidelity. Yes.
I know we're going to be getting into the discussion of the levy. What we're seeing here in terms of priorities, although they are for 25-26, that provides a foundation for follow-on work as well. Do you actually make an assessment on the levy ask and what might be jeopardized in this foundation?
Well, for our EPNO levy, what we need to remember is, is that 52% of it is attributed to high-quality teaching and learning. So since our most recent budget reductions, we've had to stall a lot of curriculum adoptions. And one of the things that we are trying to piecemeal together currently is what would it look like and sound like for Tier 3 interventions? But part of the social-emotional learning relies heavily upon our counseling team, which is funded by our EPNO dollars. So when you, when, when you do not have EPNO funds, you have to reduce, what we, what we estimated is close to 200 staff, if, that are reliant upon programs and services. So our counselors, our nurses, our safety and security team, our college and career readiness specialists that we just talked about. So in addition to MTSS, when you think about fully running and operating a school, it pays for, there's no real place where it's untouched.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Next item on the agenda is the EPNO levy presentation. Dr. Pfeifer?
All right, school board team, as you know, in February of 2026, February 10th, to be exact, we'll be going out to our community for the renewal of our EPNO levy. The EPNO levy funds, help bridge the gap between what we are funded by the state and what it actually is needed to operate our school district. This includes staffing, student support services, athletics, activities, music, security, and other programs and operations. In February of 2026, our levy, again, which is a renewal, will appear on the ballot and has consistently been supported by our voters since 1980. I want to both thank and acknowledge that the all that you have invested, the time and attention to going really deep on our educational programs and operations levy, specifically understanding the funding structure, as well as what our EPNO funds pay for. So I want to acknowledge the Board and all the work that they've done around that. I've asked Rob Bryant, our Chief Finance Officer, to provide another overview of our EPNO levy, recognizing that this evening is also the first reading of the resolution, as is legally required. Rob?
Thank you, Dr. Pfeifer. Good evening, Board President Dr. Jones, members of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. Pfeifer. Tonight, I am pleased to provide an update on planning for the renewal of the district's educational programs and operations, or EPNO levy. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to summarize the discussions and the work that the Board has done related to the planning for the upcoming levy. As a reminder, the EPNO planning and discussions with the Board started in August, and they have continued to this point. In tonight's presentation, we will also cover what the EPNO levy is, when it expires, how the levy amounts are determined, and what it funds in Federal Way public schools. And we will also focus on what we will be presenting to voters in February, including the levy amounts and the tax rates. And we will also cover the legislatively required resolution for which the Board will be conducting its first reading tonight. And then finally, we will talk through the next steps in the process, including that first reading, the subsequent final reading, and then the resolution adoption that is planned for November 18th. It is important to understand what an EPNO levy is and what it means for the school district. The EPNO levy is local money. It's approved by local voters and is collected through property taxes each year. The funding goes straight to the district and is essentially the community directly investing in our schools. The funds are separate from the state funding that the district receives, that specifically covers the state's definition of basic education. The EPNO levy funds programs and operations that the state does not cover, essentially bridging the gap between what is funded by the state and what is really needed to operate a school district. And finally, it is important to keep in mind that this is a renewal levy. It's not just a brand-new tax. The proposed levy will replace the current levy that was approved by voters in 2022, and which expires at the end of calendar year 2026. Federal Way voters have supported the EPNO levy consistently since 1980, which emphasizes how the levy is an established part of the district's funding. Supporting this levy is about continuing existing support and not about starting something new. To keep the funding going without interruption and provide budget stability, the EPNO levy will provide four years of budget certainty for the school district. So how is levy authority determined? Under state law, a district's levy authority is the lesser of $2.50 per $1,000 of assessed property value, or a per-student limit that is set annually by the state. So we know that is $3,247 per student in 2025, and that will be increasing in the next several years. This limit determines the maximum amount a district can collect. For Federal Way public schools, the lesser of is the $2.50 rate multiplied by the district's assessed valuation. So for example, in calendar year 2026, and using the lesser of formula, our levy authority is currently estimated to be around $68 million. And please note that the actual tax rates will vary based on actual property values. The EPNO levy makes up approximately 10% of the district's operating budget. For 25-26, the budgeted amount of, for the levy is $46.3 million. This is the primary source of truly flexible local funding that can be used to address specific needs that aren't fully covered by the state. The 10% allows the district to bridge that gap and covers those items that the state doesn't fully fund. It's the difference between meeting the minimum legal requirements as defined by the state and what it takes to actually operate the schools. The programs and services that are supported by the levy include teachers and classroom support staff that are above the levels funded by the state, mental health and other counseling services, safety and security staff, transportation costs, technology, curriculum, and instructional materials. The levy is also a source of funding for those programs that are often seen as a good school experience beyond just academics. So we're talking about athletics, arts, music, and other extracurriculars. The state's funding model does not cover these programs that are vital in keeping students engaged. The levy also provides the funding for maintenance, custodians, utilities, and those things that are needed to keep the schools functional, clean, safe, warm, and operationally sound. To summarize the previous slides, the EPNO levy is foundational to the financial health of the district. It is a renewal of existing local support, and it is the main way the district fills that gap. In essence, it pays for the staff and operations that are required to operate schools, but that aren't fully funded by the state. You'll recall, over the past several months, and through work studies, board meetings, and board retreats, we presented multiple options for the Board's consideration. As a result of this work and those conversations, here is the outcome. We will be presenting a four-year renewal levy to the committee on February 10th, 2026. It will be starting with an amount of $71,408,000 in calendar year 2027, and then it will go to $74,978,000 in '28, $78,727,000 in 2029, and $82,663,000 in 2030. The estimated tax rate is $2.50 per $1,000 of assessed valuation for each of the four years. And this is assuming a conservative 5% assessed valuation increase for each of the years of the levy. Based on these amounts and rates, the estimated monthly taxes on a home valued at $500,000 in calendar year 2027 would be approximately $104 a month. This is an estimated increase of $31 a month over the current calendar year 2026 estimates. The other important thing to note is that over the four-year levy period, this will drive in $34 million of new funding for Federal Way public schools, or an average of $8.5 million per year. This slide shows a review of Federal Way's combined tax rate over time, highlighting a significant decrease after McClary in 2018. Looking to the stacked charts to the right of the orange line, you can see the estimated tax rates for 2027 through 2030. The estimated tax rates are made up of three levies. The EPNO levy, which is represented by the blue portion of the bars, the technology levy, which is represented by the gray portion of the bar, and it's kind of sandwiched in between the yellow and the blue, and the levy for the bonds, which is the yellow-shaded portion. The estimated combined tax rate for the period from 2027 through 2030 ranges from $3.73 and to $3.67. And it is similar into, to the tax rate in the years that were immediately following McClary. So, so 2019, 20, 21, and 22. Also, please note that the first four years in the chart were from pre-Mclary, and that was when there was a different levy authority in place, which allowed for much higher local levy rates. Tonight, the Board will be doing its first reading of Resolution 2025-12. A levy resolution does require Board action. The resolution is the legal requirement that sets the election date, defines the maximum levy amounts to be collected for each specified year of the levy, and states the estimated tax rate for each year. The resolution also provides the official ballot proposition language and authorizes the district's participation in the voter's pamphlet. Looking at the timelines and next steps, the first reading of the resolution will occur tonight. The Board will formally adopt the resolution on November 18th, and then following the formal adoption of the resolution, it must be filed with King County. Elections by December 12th in order to be included on the February 10th, 2026 ballot. And then election date is set for February 10th, and then the results get certified 10 days later on February 20th. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the Board? I'm going to drive you crazy. I still don't understand. Okay, so I'm looking on page 10, tax rates for 1,000. That significant drop there in that bar, that was because of the McClary? Is that correct?
That is correct.
And how did they justify that?
It basically changed the formulas significantly, where it went from the district's funding, a greater proportion of student funding, to the state picking up a portion of it.
I'd sure like to know how they managed to think that one up. That, I, I still don't understand it. But I do understand, though, that like Bellevue, in order to raise $25 million, they can raise that kind of money, no, 125 million, they can do that on $1. Whereas for us to get half that amount, 75 million, we have to do $2.50. There's, just doesn't make sense that this could even be fair. And it's not- And it's not.
So the reason they can do that is twofold. Number one, they are on the per pupil amount, and that is determined by the state, and that is also determined by assessed valuation. So the concentration of the single-family homes, industry, and commercial property. So school districts that don't have a high density of single-family homes, commercial property, or industry property has less of a tax base, so the burden of the tax overall is spread with fewer people. Okay? So that's what you have to think about it. So you have more industry, more commercial property, higher assessed valuations on homes. They can, they can collect a lot more, they can levy a lot more because of that. And so in Lake Washington School District, they can levy $125 million for approximately $1 per thousand of assessed valuation. That is correct. And when you see the drop-off, I also want to just remind you that that's also when regionalization came in. Okay? So regionalization is part of the solution around McClery. And regionalization is where you use, once again, assessed valuation to determine if you were a 12% district, if you were an 18% district, a 6%, a 4%, or 0%. Okay? And that, that funding then went to attract and retain, and it was used to actually make certain that teachers were being afforded a livable wage. Now, what happens is you all share the same market, right, for teaching force. We try our very best to keep at the mid-market level, but we're all trying to go after the best and the brightest teachers, and it creates a rate change, but we still must compete. So it takes money out of our general fund that other school districts might be afforded to use other things for, and we put that money into attracting and retaining and compensation at large for all of our staff. So yes, there is currently, when you think about an equity-based funding model for schools, there is an inequity because we use the values of homes and our tax base to afford what should be holistically covered by the state.
So it seems to me that the state, at one time, wanted universal salaries statewide. Did they get away from that? And now it seems like they're putting the burden now on the school districts, which it was previously, but now they've, I thought they corrected it, now they've gone back to that old system?
We, we each have our own, our staffing and compensation model, but they're compensated differently based on, so let's say, one of our teachers, I'm just gonna use a stipend example, because that's the easiest thing I can think of. So in federalway public schools, we might give a stipend for participating on a, one of our leadership teams, our CELT team. Maybe their, maybe their stipend is $2,000 here, okay? But in Lake Washington, given some of the additional fundings, that stipend might be $3,000 or $4,000. There, there's just a variance in the way compensation, the way regionalization played out, related to this.
So is there anything we can do to address that at the legislature? Can we all go down and stand on the steps?
So a couple of things have been happening most recently. If you remember from the large session, what came out legislatively is that they must examine, that they, the legislators directed OSPI to create a work group that was going to be examining all the different funding structures and other things across our state that the committee is currently running. That's the first thing. The second thing is, is that for the last several years, we've used regionalization as one of our points of advocacy. Those are in our legislative priorities. I go and I go down in partnership with other board members to advocate in federalway public schools' behalf. Our union partners have been very, very vocal, particularly around regionalization, and that has been one of their priorities. So yes, advocacy works, so does sitting in testimony, which we have all done at various times. So this is something that we have been relentless around, and my hope is, is that after the committees really start studying the way schools are funded, as a state, we move in a different direction. But that is gonna be up for them to decipher, and I will continue to advocate on behalf of our staff, as well as our students, because we deserve it.
Thank you for that presentation. Next item on the agenda is the first reading of the EPNO replacement levy resolution, and I'll read that at this time. Resolution number 2025-12. A resolution of the Board of Directors of the Federalway School District, number 210, King County, Washington, providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the district at a special election to be held on February 10th, 2026. A ballot proposition to determine whether execs' taxes should be levied to pay part of the cost of educational programs and operations support of the district. Proposition number one, Federalway School District, number 210, replacement educational programs and operations levy. The Board of Directors of Federalway Public Schools adopted Resolution number 2025-12 concerning a proposition renewing and expiring levy for education. This proposition would authorize the district to levy the following execs' taxes on all taxable property within the district, providing support for educational programs, staff, and operations not funded by the state, including teachers, classroom support staff, nurses, counselors, transportation, technology, safety and security staff, college and career readiness, athletics, arts, and music. Collection year 2027, levy rate $2.50 per $1,000 of assessed value, yielding a levy amount of $71,408,000. Collection year 2028, $2.50 per $1,000 of assessed value, yielding a levy amount of Collection year 2029, $2.50 levy rate per $1,000 of assessed value, yielding a levy amount of $78,727,000. Collection year 2030, $2.50 levy rate per $1,000 of assessed value, yielding a levy amount of $82,663,000. Should this proposition be approved? Next item on the agenda is the approval of GP15 Director Orientation. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
I move the Board of Education approve the policy change for GP15 Director Orientation as submitted.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second? Hold a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in? Yes. Did I get a chance to see that? Was that in our minutes?
That's the one, Director Murphy, that during our retreat, we talked about removing school committees, and so that was the only adjustment that was made to the text.
Oh, okay.
That was all.
Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is GP5 Board Compliance Monitoring Documents. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Move the Board of Education is in compliance with the NS Executive Limitations, Boards and Tendents Relationship, and Governance Process Policies. GP5.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is school reports, as we have three scholar representatives. They'll alternate reporting at each meeting. This meeting, we have Yandel Barron Toledo and Izzy Owens reporting. Izzy, would you like to begin?
Across the district, the start of the school year has been full of energy, connection, and school spirit. Teachers and advisors have been doing a great job keeping students engaged and helping everyone ease back into routines. Many schools have focused on creating welcoming environments through community-building activities and opportunities for schools, students to get involved. District-wide, high schools have been wrapping up homecoming festivities, which brought students together and showed how much pride and spirit each school has. Fall sports are also coming to a close, with some teams moving into postseason play, reflecting the dedication and hard work of our athletes. When I reflect on the start of the school year, one of the most meaningful things has been seeing students reengage with their schools and build stronger connections with their communities. There's been a real sense of excitement and pride as everyone settles back in and finds their rhythm. I'd love to see even more opportunities for students to use their voices and collaborate across different schools and grade levels. I think a great example of this was, all high schools across the district had an inter-high meeting at Federalway High School, where leaders from all four schools shared many valuable ideas. My school has even implemented some of these ideas and has received a lot of positive feedback, and I would love to do something like that again, even across other grade levels. I think creating spaces where students can share ideas, lead initiatives, and support one another would continue to strengthen our district as a whole. I'm looking forward to seeing that growth throughout the year, both in leadership and in the sense of unity across all schools.
Thank you, Izzy. Yandel, would you like to continue with your report?
Yeah. Hey, everyone. To start off today's report, we'll be looking at Federalway Public Academy. They have their first dance coming up on November 14th, with the theme being "A Night in the Bayou." Regarding their start to the school year, they held a field day in an effort to break the ice of both the new and returning students. Efforts like these are showing to help cultivate bonds between students of all grades and backgrounds and providing a sense of community. In Todd Beamer, they kicked off the year with a school-wide game of Rochambeau, which, for those who don't know, is an iteration of rock, paper, scissors. This was received extremely well, as the students say it brought life to the hallways. Then Todd Beamer also held their Spirit Week last week, which further emphasized the friendly and inclusive environment that they are constantly building upon. Thomas Jefferson's junior class recently started a fundraiser for Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is October, selling bracelets during all lunches from Wednesday to Friday, all proceeds going to the American Cancer Society. TJ's Homecoming was also a major success, having sold over 900 tickets. Sports and clubs are thriving at TJ, with the robotics club scoring high in their recent competition, and student unions having their first meets this past week. Then Evergreen Middle School finished planning their first pep assembly and spirit week, also in an attempt to create those bridges between students and break down these walls of division that we sometimes see between students. And reflecting on when school first started for me this school year, it felt great. I felt great returning as a student, to know that I was back in the center of it all. The energy, the flow of work that I knew was to come, I knew I was ready to do it all over again. I liked the sense of change that reverberated throughout the school walls, not just the phone policy, but the change that came in the form of the unwritten, the unspoken words that touched my heart that had no ears. The spirit the staff came with helped cultivate a safe space to want more, to be ambitious, that it was okay to want to exceed past what was expected from you. The learning should and is the teachers' priorities. We held assemblies, bringing us all together. Unity is how a school will persevere, I feel like. Once we begin to cause a division between staff and scholars, all else should be secondary, for if the bridge is burnt, nothing else can come across to the other side. I'd love to see the spirit back in schools. Let's decorate, let's have some fun beyond a spirit week. Every week should be full of spirit. I cannot wait to see the future become the present right in front of me, through the minds of the youth, in the form of student-led assemblies, clubs, and anything in between. Thank you all, and let's have a great school year this year.
Thank you very much, Yandel and Izzy. Always good to hear from our young student, student representatives. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Superintendent Comments. Dr. Pfeiffer?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Excited to have both of you next to me, and can't wait to see what the year holds for both of you. We're sitting next to two seniors, right? So they're, they're in the thick of planning their futures as we speak, and submitting applications, and thinking about their next steps. So excited to have you. We've been busy since our last school board meeting, out visiting schools, holding first, our first advisories, and hosting a wide variety of events across the districts. Last week, on October 15th, I had the opportunity to, more than, more than last week, but a week and a half, opportunity to join the Korean consulate, which we honored here tonight as we visited Olympic UK8. They, the consulate is their diplomat that they send from South Korea, Consul General Seo, and she has been nothing but supportive in the development of the Korean dual-language program. And as you heard this evening, they donated $15,000 towards upholding and continuing to build the capacity of teachers and giving students whatever they need. So that was just an amazing observation and a visit, and we were glad to do that together in partnership with our Korean consulate partners. We also held our first family academy event of the 2526 school year on October 16th. It was, again, innovate, collaborate, educate, learning beyond the classroom, future-ready families. Families learned how to support their children for assessments, writing, college planning, attendance, digital citizenship, and much, much more. We hosted approximately 200 families, both online and in person. It was an incredible event, and we're looking forward to our next one that happens in December. On October 21st, we hosted our first scholar advisory to the superintendent, meeting at the central office. I had over 60 middle and high school students join me in a conversation about the launch of the school year, what worked well and how we can improve, getting feedback, especially around the cellphone policy, which you'd think that they would be resistant to, but they actually said that they're enjoying it and it is helping. The other thing, they just talked about the consistency in the application and how, at the beginning of the year, they were learning, but now it feels like it's off to a great start. So I appreciate their voices on that. We also held on that same night the parent advisory to the superintendent. I had about 42 parents come, one of our highest attended thus far. We also asked them about feedback for the first one and a half months of school. They provided some great feedback, and I'm looking forward to a strong year with our parent advisory. And then you heard this evening, we had our annual life after high school, college, and career. It was well-attended. Over 900 people attended that evening, middle school and high school students. They got a jump to start planning for their future, they got to explore post-secondary booths, colleges, and trade schools, they attended workshops and panels. So I want to thank our college and career readiness team, our college and career specialists at our schools, that really do a heavy lift in organizing all of this. So it's a wonderful event. We also just hosted our first early learning gathering of the year at our Truman Early Learning Center, and through Zoom and in-person, it's open to caregivers, directors, teachers, and other early learning professionals. We all came together to discuss best practices and approaches to prepare our future. Federalway Public Schools solos for success, and I want to thank our early learning department, as well as our early learning partners in the community, for making it a success. Last Friday, the Federalway Public Schools team members attended the BAG Program's Chopped Charity Event that's hosted at Federalway High School, and BAG stands for Bridging a Cap. They provide weekend meals to our students that need them, and this, it was really a fun chef duel event that puts people's, the chefs' culinary skills and expertise to the test, and they raised money through that charity event to help feed our students and our community. So I want to give a shout-out to BAG. We couldn't do it without you, and we appreciate you. And then finally, just a reminder, next week is our first installment of student-led conferences. It's hard to believe that it's already November 6th and 7th next week, and that we fall back this weekend. But the teachers and parents, that partnership is so important, so connecting with the teacher, talking about academic strengths, growth opportunities, and goals for the school year. So that is it in a nutshell. Lots going on right now.
Thank you, Dr. Pfeiffer. Next item on the agenda is School Board Comments, beginning with Director Morris.
I'd like to thank Principal Pritchard for being such a great hostess, and the students for their presentation. I got a tour with Dr. Pfeiffer of Adelaide, which is very close to my own home in, in, in that area, within walking distance. I usually take that walk quite often. I usually take that walk quite often. My first observation was that Adelaide is definitely in need of bond funding in the future. It's one of the, the aging assets we have. Touring each of the, the classrooms was enlightening. It always is a positive experience to see the kids actually engaged and seeing the, the staff so attentive. I'm also appreciative of the, the mini-retreat that we had last week, and we, we got an overview of how the critical thinking is being implemented into the curriculum, and that's a very positive thing. As an engineer, I see the value of critical thinking. As a systems engineer, I see the value of discernment. So, that's a skill that follows forever and is almost essential. And it's one of those skills that seems to be not necessarily applied across the board. And so, hopefully, the, the students that are exposed to this come away with a profound skill that they can apply lifelong. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Morris. Director Phillips.
Nothing major today. I did just want to add, we have our legis advocacy conference coming up here pretty soon, and there is actually a track for scholar-advisors. So, I've been meaning to tell you this, but if, if some of our scholars are interested in that, I think that'd be a good plug. There's quite a bit of a movement around including student voice in decision-making, and it's always nice that Federal Way is kind of leading in that. It's fun to share how we have advisories at so many different levels. Yeah. People are surprised that we include our elementary kiddos, middle school, high school, advisors to the superintendent, and so forth. So, I was just thinking, congratulations on kind of leading that work. And I'm excited to see you guys both back. I can't believe you're seniors already. I'm glad you gave me a whole year to prepare my tears for June, because you know I will be up there crying. So, anyway, I'm glad you guys are both here.
Thank you, Director Phillips. Vice President Davis.
I had the pleasure of doing some school visits. I also tagged along to visit Adelaide, which was, was, was a great visit. Today, visited Sequoia. And a lot of what is listed and shown in the presentation today about the priorities, I'm starting to see take place in the schools, the Level Up and some of the, we're not, we're not calling it intervention, but Level Up. And that is not, and, and I, you know, really took notice that it's not that feel of, of a resource room of old. It is really, they're in class, and they, they, they seem to feel like they're more in classroom setting, opposed to just being in a resource room with maybe kids that weren't in their same grade. And so, you had one person there trying to instruct, you know, students that were either, you know, second, third, fourth, it didn't matter, they were just all kind of there sitting at the table. So, that was good to see. And then, finding out that the attendance was, had improved at Sequoia, and just watching them pass the sixth and seventh grade, I guess we saw passing, how they, you know, they had the countdown, even one of the students came by and got the microphone and did one of, part of the countdown, that they had to get to class, and they managed to do it all in that amount of time. And there weren't any kids lingering or goofing around or whatever. So, that was, they're starting to know what they're supposed to do, and being responsible, and holding each other accountable, and dragging each other along the class. I thought that was kind of cute. The kids were definitely engaged in their learning. And then, we were in ELA when we saw this whole breaking down of the words. I was like, oh, and this is preparing for the reading the next day. So, that was new to me, to, to see, see ELA, you know, reading being taught that way. So, I thought that was pretty, pretty good. So, yep, that for me.
Thank you, Vice President Davis. Director Murphy.
I really have not had, I don't have anything really specific I want to report on. I'm still focusing on understanding the levy and trying to talk with folks that I encounter and helping them to understand, because I do know that there's going to be resistance out there in the community. I heard that our, that our transportation budget, they're going to be asking another one percent raise, you know? It's just, we're being taxed like crazy. And so, that's where I'm putting my focus, is trying to help get this levy passed.
Thank you, Director Murphy. I want to, again, show my appreciation for the welcome that Kilo Middle School has given us here, and the Kilo Middle School Cougars showing off their math program. It was really enjoyable to watch. As a math person myself, I really liked the way they were talking about their, 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 their problems and trying to figure out what they were doing, and talking to each other and figuring that out was really cool to see. And I also like the emphasis on reading, writing, and math, is what we're working on, which is, you know, very important fundamentals that they should be looking at. And their attendance goals, that's also very important. I like to see that going on in all the different schools. And one thing that I noted that I really appreciated was the, the statement that, in terms of behavior and discipline, that the school is looking at proactive supports more than reactive to behavior. And I thought that was an excellent comment and excellent policy to have in place. And other than that, I'm, again, hoping that we can get more information out about the levy and how important that is, and all the things that it supports that we, I think, are vital to our schools and to our scholars in our community. So, I'm hoping that we can make sure we keep communicating that to the, to the community at large. And that is my last, last comment. All right. And I guess with that, we are adjourned.